I'd like to call as ordered City Commission meeting day Wednesday, August 21st. We were arrived by invitation led by Mr. Pamela Bailey, followed by our next Police was led by Commissioner Julie Marshall. Ms. Riley.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just gonna let everybody down the heads. Oh Lord, I've got a country this evening, thank you for your protection of our city. I ask you Father, to continue to be with us in our daily routines, and that your presence is leading to our city leaders and to the people of Long Beach. Father, we continue to pray for peace all over the world. I pray that we as a city continue to move forward in love, serenity, and humanity. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
And I believe this is the right in the United States of America, and in the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to thank you everybody for coming out this evening for our meeting. Before I get started, Commissioners, there any additional additions to our present agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for items two and three from our agenda to debate.
If you're probably more second to defer item two and item three from our agenda, in defer discussion, here in the automatic with this right hand, and I'm most prepared to defer those items to items. Also, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend item number thirteen to discuss truck parking rather than scrap tires. Most second for to amend item number thirteen from using scrap tire business to truck parking rather than special land, here in the automatic with this right hand. Thank you. All right, and we start our, our meeting today. First of all, I'd like to recognize our municipal judge, Mr. Crystal Donalds. Just stand, give him a round of applause. All right, our first item on our agenda is our public comment period. Madam Burke, will you call out some names?
Nina Harrison.
Please step forward, state your name and your address, and you have five minutes. Three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Nina G. Harrison. I reside at twenty-six Old Stedham Johnson Street, right in the city.
I couldn't see who's on top of the.
Oh, what I want to talk about is L Street.
Is that?
Now, it has been going on entirely too long. And to me, with the orange battles around the city, you gotta take the shortcut other ways into the new plaza. L Street has always been a thorough road. I grew up on L Street, and it's ridiculous the way it looks. And it seems like nobody's doing anything, that's why I'm here, for number one. But number two, there has always been black entrepreneurs that had businesses on L Street. I can tell you from Long Street all the way down to Cook Street, and tell you every area that there was a black entrepreneurial business. And it's sad, when you have different ones to come into in your own time. I'm from Brunswick, I grew up here. I skated on L Street. L Street was not green, it was not asphalt, but L Street was red brick. My dad watched us to go across the street and skate. And now, it looks just like a jungle. So what are y'all going to do? Brunswick, I see different types of town, everything happening. Nobody puts in the paper, what are you going to do with L Street? So, Commissioner Hopp, I think we're talking here, but Commissioner Hopp and the rest of you, City Commissioners, what are y'all going to do about L Street? Give me an answer.
Um, Ms. Harrison, I can give you an answer. I'd like my City Manager to give you an even better answer as to what we're doing, where we are in terms of L Street. Can you go ahead and say that, tell Mr. City Manager?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, L Street is a major project the city's undertaken. In twenty eighteen, the city and the, uh, John Waters Super Commission joined together to make a project because we know that the road is in such bad condition. And so what we did is, before we were going to tear the road up and just repave it, Truck Waters Super told us that they're gonna be putting pipes to the road very soon. We think that they're gonna be cutting it up and putting brunts and bumps and things like that into the road. And so, we didn't want them destroying the repaved road, so we said, "Let's join you to do the road project together." So what we planned out was the Truck Waters Super was all this water sewer back so that anywhere near that area that were older and needed to be replaced, and then the city would come in and rebuild the road bed, put a whole new roadway in there that could basically last water sewer and drainage, and the roadway, and let the road go through for forty years. So it's a major project, not just repaving. And so it took a full year of engineering, and again, the public brochures here, but it's had a starting date, wasn't it? It was probably in late early spring, we began open date, and close off the road, we held community meetings, and those of our junior or senior citizens that ever took visits about that. And we asked people to come out and learn about what was gonna happen. But the project's actually a year-long project. And so, we're gonna be under construction throughout the entire year of twenty nineteen. And so, I'm waiting this for the postal to enter earlier, early in the twenty twenties. So, and while we're doing that, there apparently the land gas company found out that they had some gas pipes that came in through, and that's what the hole that bit right now. The reason that there's no action going on on L Street is because of land gas actually went in and doing some repairs that damaged some of the water pipes that have already been ripped to the ground. And some of the new pipes that are already installed, now they're going to have to repair their own gas lines, but also come back and repair the water lines that they damaged while they came in to do repairs. Now, the project's not running late. Everyone's saying it's gonna take a long time, it's always been, it's always been planned to take a long time, unfortunately, it's a career project. But, we've not lost enough time because we already planned for bad weather and things that would happen through the summer. And so, there's been delay, they're gonna have to probably three weeks. Oh, there's a proper worst of that. But the, uh, they've been out there not only dropped in three weeks because we can't do anything more to water and sewer pipes, until land gas exchanges their pipes. So that's where it's at, I believe. Uh, Mr. Harrison, the land gas is coming in on L Street, uh, this morning, I think it was tomorrow?
Especially there on that.
Monday, okay. So they're gonna come out and start working on gas repairs on it by then. And then after that, soon after that, we'll be able to get our crews back in and work on water and sewer drainage. And then, and then we're gonna come back and repave. In fact, the project's gonna go all the way up to seventeen. So this is, what phases, this is phase one?
Phase one, three phases.
Right, so there's gonna be other phases of the project along the way. Try and keep it open. People worried about access, try to keep a lot of crossings open. People are worried about the cutoff, but the base is supposed to be ready now, makes for some pretty rough little process. But I do know that they're out there working.
Each phase is supposed to be completed before the next phase starts, correct?
That's right. Phase one will be completed and open the traffic before moving to phase two. And then, what the phase.
And phase, phase two is, is it, uh, which year?
Phase two is good year to almost to Cook Street.
Uh, towards the center.
Cook Street, if you kind of add it, it's almost seventeen in the space there. So, Ms. Harrison, officially, uh, we are still working on that. This is a year-long project. Realize that people are in convenience, uh, but they wanted to finish before when it was what, or a turtle. Uh, realizing too, that we paved over those bricks before, now we have taken those bricks up. It's time to actually re-engineer the whole road, so we're gonna make it better. But unfortunately, it's taking us to get worse for making it better. That's, 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 I know it doesn't, it's not what you want to hear,
Exactly.
but it is our reality of what we're trying to do, try to make things better.
Yeah, it's gonna be better.
It's true. Thank you. Who's next?
Hal Hart.
Mr. Mayor? Sir? Please state your name again.
My name is Hal Hart. If I could, please hope that you'd like to speak here with Commissioner Kayson Alexis.
Sure.
Please, you're perfect, thanks a lot. If you'd like to make a call or something.
Okay, who's next?
Calvin Way.
Mr. Way. Mr. Way, uh. Uh, put us into the way of the address.
To the.
Mr. Way, um, resides at forty-three ninety-three Highway eighty-two.
Go ahead, sir.
To the City Commission. We thank you for the opportunity to bring forward this supplementation for a very important historical event that has been in the questionation status for approximately sixty years. We, the citizens of City of Brunswick, the county of Glen, as well as the surrounding communities, are asking you to support this effort of changing the G Street that extends from US seventeen highway over to New Hanson Street that also fronts the new Zion, Zion Baptist Church where Judas Caesar quote, "pastor." He was a pastor of that, in that administration time. He also was president of the NCP during the time of his administration. As he did lead these communities in a mild, mild man in a civil rights school, as well as the passing of the Integration Bill effort. This would be very appropriate and dynamic for our future generation. So create one block from the historic Washington High School in eighteen hundred block of Old West Street, which would be very important for our generations in that area. Some of the accomplishments we need to make you hear. During the times of his leadership period, with the, with that identifying names, City Police Department maintaining four officers on evening and midnight shifts. I happen to be one of those officers. The Glen County Task Office, one tower in each bank, which we had two banks during that time, First National Bank and the American Bank. The downtown much counters, bus station, communication, certain positions that took place in the school system during that, general and activities. Three grocery stores that we had here in the city of Brunswick. We had employees hired after going to pick islands in North Carolina. We're asking this commission to be a part of this important historical event.
Thanks. Thank you, sir. Anyone else speak, you guys, uh, speak to the mic? They play very good.
I'm Robert Griffin. I live at eighteen hundred G Street. Uh, I've been a resident in Brunswick ever since nineteen sixty-one, I believe it was. Uh, I'm a retired educator for the Glen County Public School System. Uh, most of you were here during the period of the JCO administration and designed our to search and the early civil rights movement. Now, what happened in Glen County was so historic, I'll tell you. Several of you have seen the documentary, which I presented to you, that CBS came all the way from New York and did on the desegregation process of Glen County, it's entitled "The Quiet Conflict", and something you can find it on the internet, and maybe you refer it to as "The Silent Conflict". But they came down and did a forty-five minute documentary on the fact that Glen County desegregated this whole area without bloodshed. Uh, it's a very fabulous documentary, you can look, look it up on the internet, or you can contact me and I give you a copy of the documentary. Uh, I could stand here for the next hour and tell you how Reverend Hope bought stability or civilized this whole community through an interpersonal relationship, and we did it in a quiet manner. So, we are here representing a, a, a special interest group of the city to ask you to consider naming the G Street causeway across the JCO causeway, uh, you can call it street or avenue, it doesn't matter. But we do feel that his name should be reflected. Thank you.
Anyone else? No one else, thank you so very much. Oh, Julie, sorry.
I'm like Julie Jordan, and I have not lived in the city. I'm a candidate for House District one seventy-nine, which includes the city. And although I was not around when Reverend Hope was, was here, I have heard many stories about him, and I think it's time that we add more streets and monuments for our African-American citizens who have given so much to this community.
I'd like everybody to thank you all for coming and standing with, uh, Mr. Way as he presented, uh, this petition. Uh, and Mr. Way, I believe, uh, the petition, uh, there is a procedure for petitioning to have a street named, uh, renaming of a street. Um, and so, uh, Naomi, will you please make sure we get the, uh, word to Dr. Miss Ford, this?
So we just already talked to Brad, so he has the.
He has the doctor's. Okay, all right, so, thank you. We can, we'll come, we'll come to the force again, uh, to actually, uh, make that decision. Anybody else who was speaking of public comment, while we have a little time left? All right, here in the, we'll move right on with our, uh, agenda. Item number one's, uh, recognition, presentation of awards. Sabrina Hodges and Lynn environmental pollution to give presentation regarding water quality monitor. You mean to set it up again?
Okay, there we go. Uh, hello, good evening. Thank you guys so much for allowing, uh, the Living Environmental Protection to speak this evening. And specifically, uh, thank you, Commissioner Harris, for inviting us to be here today. We greatly appreciate it, and, uh, we hope that you guys find what, uh, we're presenting today intriguing, as, at least as intriguing as we, uh, do. My name is Rachel Thompson, I'm the executive director of the Living Environmental Protection. Our mission is to ensure our clean environment, healthy economy, versus the same for still more. Our organization was first reached out to in regard to Liberty Rolloffs and recycling facility that's located on Haverstone Street back in two thousand eight and two thousand nine. This was when the facility was applying for a solid waste handling permit. Um, that was in two thousand eight, and they actually acquired their permit in two thousand nine. We didn't hear anything about the facility in between probably two thousand nine and two thousand fourteen. But it was between two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen that the facility's operations started to expand. And in the process of them expanding their operations there, we started getting calls from residents in local, um, uh, sorry, residents of the Magnolia Park neighborhood, um, in regards to nuisance odors, dust, um, emanating from the facility, and also some respiratory illness, respiratory illness or distress that the residents were experiencing because of the odors and dust coming from the facility. Following those calls, we did work with the Environmental Protection Division to try to get them to enforce an air quality violation. Uh, the response that we got was that there are too many, um, facilities within Glen County for them to actually figure out where the smell was coming from specifically. So, there was no careful action on part of the Environmental Protection Division in terms of air quality violations, which led us to start investigating the water quality. Um, so I'm with Sabrina Hodges. She, um, was an intern for the summer, but we actually hired her on part-time to continue working on the water quality around, um, the facility. And I'm gonna let her tell you all about what she's doing and what she's done there.
Hi, uh, I'm again, like, the Commissioner Harris for inviting me here today. Uh, this is Thompson, this introduces me as Sabrina Hodges. Um, and for two months, um, I, June to July, I have been working on a project in Magnolia Park and College Park, but I'm in the facility to sample the drainage pitches for the Liberty Rolloffs and recycling. Um, today, I am here to give you the overview of that project, as well as updates on our current data and figures. Um, and our actual plan for the next four months of sampling. The purpose of our project is to improve the water quality and obtain environmental justice program in our neighborhood with community participation in Georgia Dr. Schu water quality monitoring programs. It, as you can see in our actual plan, this was originally created in twenty eighteen. Um, they worked on solid waste control changes, as well as transfer station guidelines. Um, we did look through community engagement, we attended the day meetings and listened to any of the concerns that our citizens are having. Um, and here right now, we're in a water quality monitoring program we're trying, working through. In the next slide, you're going to be seeing the development of fifty thirty-two Haverstone Street, which the people are just currently, um, residing at and looking at. Um, the year starts in two thousand eight when they applied for their, um, permit, their solid waste handling permits. Um, this is two thousand nine. Twelve, as you can see, is, as they bring in more trash, as they, you know, expand, the environment around changes. We look at the lake that is in, in the top left corner. Um, we see that it gets greater, and we usually do see this when you have high currents in the water, you have, um, it's more, um, alkaline. Um, see, it's completely covered in twenty seventeen. Um, we did have, which I was really excited to see, um, this most recent picture is from twenty nineteen. It was taken by James Holland, who is flyover of the Georgia coast, um, and he provided us multiple pictures of the facility. Um, the next side of the pictures we're gonna see are from our initial psych review. Um, we looked through all around the drainage pitches, county easements, along the roll offs. And what we found is that the water was, if you look at the picture, it's, it's green. There's algae foam, um, and this is around, uh, that is Dan Harzey. He is, um, he was a former executive director, um, he took Rachel out, uh, looking at the sites. Um, as you can see, um, from this initial valuation and using Q public, um, Glen County's GIS mapping for property maps, um, we were able to determine two possible outfalls, and this is, these are areas where water runs off of the property and into the drainage pitches. Um, and from there, we chose six sampling sites. We had three that are on the bottom right here. We have three sampling sites that are residential, they are along Magnolia Park, Heimy Drive, and we have, uh, three more sites along, um, the light industrial commercial side, which is on Rose Drive. Um, so what are we looking for, what have we found? Um, so far, when we look with sampling, we like to look at nitrates, phosphates, pH. Um, nitrates and phosphates are nutrients that many, um, algae, bacteria, um, fish, many aquatic animals like to eat. Um, and when you have an overinflux of nitrates and phosphates, you have high alkaline, and this causes dissolved oxygen, which we look at too in the slide, um, it causes that to drop, which can cause, um, death and decay of other, um, vegetation and other animals, which then you have bacterial blooms. Then it causes a rise in bacteria. Um, another thing we looked at is pH, and pH is a measure of how acidic or basic the water is, setting the neutral. Um, one of the six is acidic, well, uh, eight through fourteen is basic. Uh, he says that the high pH is archetypal to the water body because many animals can only, uh, can only, um, right, they can only live in certain kinds of water, so once you change and become more acidic, you become more basic, then you start to see death and decay. Um, nitrates and phosphates are not on a graph in this, uh, presentation. Uh, the, the results from each test were way below, uh, zero point one, zero point two. Uh, this means that they are not high enough to cause concern. Uh, pH is also not noted in a graph, um, because due to some circumstances that were beyond our control, we were not able to get sampling until July, um, when we do once a month sampling. Um, but, what we found from those sampling, from our leave of sampling, the pH is five point five, which is very acidic, which can cause our decay. Um, our next slide is going to be dissolved oxygen. Um, dissolved oxygen is the measure of how much oxygen is dissolved in water and how much is readily available for aquatic species, like insects, fish, taples. Um, areas that are stagnant are standing, which are basically like their ponds or drainage pitches, um, that you think that's supposed to hold water has a, has a low dissolved oxygen starting out. Um, it's because there's no mixing in the water, so there's no way for the oxygen to just, uh, there's no way for the oxygen to mix itself around and spread itself out. Um, the DO is related to oxygen. Um, as the water temperature increases, you're gonna have lower dissolved oxygen because you'll have high algae. And once it's high algae, it's more susceptible bacteria to feed on. So once that bacteria feeds on, and you said that dissolved oxygen, you're gonna see less and less fish species being able to survive, or you see less vegetation, because it's not gonna be enough dissolved oxygen to last. Um, Georgia State standard on the Georgia water stream is five milligrams per liter, so that's one milligram per one liter of water's dissolved oxygen. As you can see, on the left side, we have sites four through six. That's, uh, sites one through three are on the left side. And the yellow, being the state standard, considerably lower. This water, um, sites one through three are residential sites, so these are water pouring Magnolia Park. Um, the water is very deep, I usually get it's about my mid thigh and, and waist. Um, and what you can see is it's lower, which you would expect for deeper water that is still stagnant. However, on the bottom right, you see sites one, uh, four through six, which start out lower, but consistently get higher and higher dissolved oxygen. We do have to note that this side is the commercial industrial side, and the water is considerably shallow, I've never reached past my ankle in the water. Um, so shallow water, you will find high dissolved oxygen. Um, our next, uh, is temperature. Uh, temperature is an indicator of activity that you have. Some species are very temperature reliant, so some, you know, really cold, and some, you know, really hot, and if you go just some degree off, it could upset the system, um, it could upset the balance. Um, it is relying on seasons, so, you know, during winter and spring, as if the water's really cold, or it's slowly starting to heat, you'll have high dissolved oxygen, because lower temperatures of water can hold on to oxygen readily than, um, when we see, um, you know, in the summer months. So these summer fall, when it's heating up and kind of starting to cool down, you're gonna have low dissolved oxygen and high bacterial rates. We expect a rise of hot temperatures. And as you can see, I did, I do sample in Celsius, but I changed it to Fahrenheit. Uh, the highest for sites one through three, which are on the, um, left side, um, they're ninety-three, it's maybe eighty-five, which is considerably high for what we would think is in the shade, it's away from the water, we're sampling the shade, so the water should not be as hot. Um, but it still is, because it's just sitting there all day, just heating up, and then kind of cooling down, but it's Georgia, you never really get away from heat. Um, and you can see from sites one through six, because of the shallow water, it's not as hot. Um, there's lower temperatures, um, I think the rise that it's at is eighty-five, and then it's considerably lower to the seven. I think the rise that it's at is 85, and then it's considerably lower to the 70s. Our next result is conductivity. So conductivity is basically the amount of ions in the water. And this is its ability to conduct electricity. Because pure water is an incubator, is an insulator. So unless it comes in contact with chemicals, it really, it won't conduct electricity. However, we use conductivity to, it's an indicator that there is something in the water that's not supposed to be there, whether it's chemicals, agricultural runoff, sewage runoff, waste runoff. And also animal, animals can greatly affect the conductivity. As it is shown, if you look at sites one through three, you notice that there are some really high peaks and there are some really low peaks. Conductivity is mixed up water and rain. So when you have high rain during your sample, it's gonna be really low. And when you have, from off of rain event, sampling a week after, no rain, you're gonna have really high conductivity. Something that did happen is I got to work with the goats that Brunswick, city of Brunswick, had started that program cleaning up the easements that normal machinery can't get. Greatest day of my life, I got to see goats I sampled. However, if you look at the peaks, the first set of peaks right there, that was sampled after the goats. So there is a possibility that the goats, their waste that was left there did have effect on my samples. Maybe it's something that, you know, there are, there are also dogs. I'm nervous in the neighborhood, there's parks, as well as dogs on the commercial side, which that could also be a factor why conductivity is high. If you look at sites four through six, however, it is consistent with some drops in peaks. However, it is farther away from rain. It is covered completely by trees and it is very low. The water is very low, so conductivity is going to be higher. Next, we're looking at coli bacteria. Coli bacteria is a bacteria that's everywhere in digestive system. And it is a bioindicator bacteria, which means that when you find E. coli, something's not right. There is something else in that water that is caught, that can cause harm to whoever eats, drinks the water, or feeds the water. Usually, it's reliant on temperature, dissolved oxygen, conductivity, and precipitation. So when you have areas that have high temperature, low dissolved oxygen, and a high conductivity, you'll have high bacteria. And when there's rain, it can cause bacteria to be washed in and bacteria to be washed out. If you notice sites one through three, which are the bottom left. The blue is site one. There is no Georgia, that, for drainage ditches, there's no Georgia set amount, but what they cause for a long with a thousand CFUs, which are colony forming units. That's how we count them is in each colony that forms in our Petri dishes. Look, the blue in sites one through three is considerably higher, which could be because of the goats. There's always, it could be from, it could be washed out from somewhere else. That is just something we've noticed that when we have, when we were there, we did have spikes. If you look through sites four through six, however, they start low, but then we have huge peaks, over present. There's no cause for that. I've not yet found a reason why there was such a jump in those two sites. So what is next for our organization in this project? As I stated, we are already two months in. There's still four months left. We've been trying to find a baseline these last two months, but there are several inconsistencies with what we are looking at. You know, you saw multiple peaks, you saw multiple, just nothing is staying consistently. There's always changes. But there's still four months left. So we still have time to figure out what's going on. Some things we're still trying to work on is looking at the flow of the water. Sites one through three are completely stagnant. There's no movement at all. So we will be working with my advisor, his name's Dr. James Tanyi. He's the College of Georgia's Environmental Science Program Coordinator. We'll be working on some tests to determine the flow of the water. And another thing we're working on is reviewing permits by the river roll-off, something that they got from D.R.E.P.A. In modern terms, that they are maintaining their compliance with these permits. Are there any questions?
Permission for questions?
I had a couple of questions. You were talking about the bacteria and you addressed that. And so what I want to know from the research that you've done and for the concern of that community, when you address bacteria, good or bad bacteria? Explain to us the significance and the effect that the good or bad bacteria that was found has on that community? Because we know the history of the community, we know about the city. So I'd like to know, as well for sure, some of the residents that are here, what effect, what are we looking at, good versus bad bacteria? And what effect are the bacterias having on that specific community?
So currently, the only bacteria that we look for is a certain E. coli. Our Petri dishes are set up to die. The colonies that, you know, eat the food that's in the Petri dishes. So all we have is that specific E. coli. It is a bad E. coli. It will get you sick if you are, if you drink the water, you're contaminated with the water. I wear face masks, gloves. When I go out, I constantly change them, wash my hands. If some kids were to fall in, they could get sick. It all depends on, if the dogs are out, they can drink the water. It's all depends on, you know, you're gonna find bacteria in drainage ditches. It does happen a lot because, you know, you have runoff from the roads, you have runoff from facilities, people's backyards. There's, there's stuff there. As long as it is below a thousand, there's really not any harm that it ever really do unless you're constantly swimming in that water.
I hope you don't have any children that live in the ditch.
No, I don't see many children. I don't see high numbers of dogs, really few dogs. But other than that, I haven't seen any other person under the need sampling.
And so that was never part of the study. I know their concern is, is what the river roll-off is producing. And if it's not just the river roll-off, or any of the other magnetism organizations in that area producing that are going to lead to eventual harm on that community? Because we had that experience with the other, with Hercules and all these others that were in these facilities. And eventually, it led to physical harm, harming the health of several of the users. So then, you don't wanna be 20 years down the road and then we've got a situation that we're currently dealing with. So we want to know about how this is going to help us to be able to help the communities that are surrounded by these companies or.
The facility doesn't have right now any discharge permits where they're actually legally allowed to dump into the water or the surrounding neighborhoods. But because they don't have that discharge permit, we're kind of, you know, looking at the water quality. You see if there is a, it would be small amounts running off, so it isn't impacting in the future. But they have only been, to the extent that they are right now, the amount of trash and waste that they're handling there. They do also have a bulging operation as well. So, you know, again, that's kind of all we're looking at. Nutrient loads, kind of what's going into the water to see if it is or is not having a tangible impact that could be, if it's not addressed now, could be a much larger problem in the future.
To lead to another problem if you're in your city or city, we're sure you don't need it.
Yeah. And that is actually part of their permit, is that they're required to have enough money, like kind of stashing their bank accounts. If the company was to go under or dissolve, you know, 24 hours from now, it's their job to actually go in and clean up that entire facility so that it doesn't get converted to the city or the county. But I'm not sure if you guys have driven past there recently or the past two months. There, you know, we call it the trash mountain because the, but it really builds up there sometimes. The photo is actually the flyover. That was the first time that I've seen it, where the mountain was probably below 10 feet. But normally, it's, you know, seemingly almost as tall as the trees. So, you know, that could, if the facility.
Was that a picture taken?
That picture was taken on the 8th of this month. So it was two days ago. The picture is, when we did the preliminary investigation, that was actually in April of last year.
Granted, two months is not very long and we was probably very interested in hopefully having this go at least a full year because you get to exchange some temperatures and everything else. It's probably all the same thing with water runoff from any other places within the city. Just so, I know you said you were looking for a baseline. You may not get a baseline if it's got issues. But are there other places you can get a baseline? And then my other question is, you said most of this water's stagnant, except maybe if there's a sudden rainfall and then it does kind of move through these stormwater. Is it treated before it's then released on into streams or waterways?
So to answer your first question, I have not searched anywhere else to use a baseline. Because this year just started, I am using the school's facility or TRS for geographical information systems. To, I'm going to be mapping out different areas that have no effect over the drainage from Magdalen Park, from the drainage ditches. So I can start sampling and find out what are other drainage ditches coming out to be. And to answer your second, could you use your keynotes? Sorry about that.
Just the waters that do eventually start to flow if there's a rainfall or storm or something, are they treated? Or are they actually, is there no water supply with the water?
They're not because this water's stagnant. It's supposed to, these drainage ditches are supposed to hold the water. So the mountain is supposed to be draining out unless and there's a huge storm, whether it's a hurricane or a tropical storm. So the water is just supposed to sit there. You will have drainage when it rains, but it's, I'm not sure if it is. I'm pretty, I do not believe this.
The facility has a storage tank that is designed to retain the water that's specifically handled in the solid waste transfer station portion of the facility. That drainage structure, they have to pre-treat it before they bring it to the Joint Water Service Commission. Since April of last year, they have not brought that water to the Joint Water Service Commission. And pre-used to that, the Joint Water Service Commission only has one instance where they have taken water from that facility. And that was a big red flag for us as to whether or not they are actually capturing that water and giving, bringing it to the Joint Water Service to treat it.
Is that the water that they're closing off the cross stream runoff?
Yeah, so when the trash trucks that drive around the city of Brunswick come, they drop off the trash on a platform. And then they have their type machinery that put it in the large trucks that actually bring it to Jessup Rockers landfill. I think that's where all that goes from that facility. Maybe some goes to Cheshire Island, but I'm pretty sure it's all for others, except for the public services facility. And then at the end of every day, they're supposed to wash down that entire area. They're not allowed to leave any trash or relate to contaminant pests. Obviously, we don't know whether or not that's happening. We can't go out of the facility after it's closed. But that's, that's the water that we're specifically talking about. The other bulging operations and construction and demolition recycling things that they have going on on the site, there's no water storage. Or maybe that's not necessarily a piece of those.
Can I mention this? Where are you finding most of the bacterial problems that you're talking about? Is it on the open end or is it in the, in the, kind of, atmosphere?
So currently, for sites one through three, which are our residential sites, one is at the intersection between both of the facility, both sides of the facility. So that is where I am finding most of our bacteria. Currently, we're not sure which is upstream or downstream just because the water is so still. I have sat there while it rained and I still cannot get a right way of the water flowing. So that's why we're gonna conduct a waterfall study with my advisor to figure out which way the water's going. However, sites four through six, which are our commercial. Six is upstream. And nine, so it's six, five, four. I'm finding more bacteria outside four, which is closer to the facility.
So the whole, all the monitoring is being done in, calling, in, I know you call.
Not just Magdalen Park. It is, we're, are doing the sample sites of Magdalen Park. And the other three sample sites are along the drainage ditches on Rose Drive, on the other side of the facility. Haversham, I have not been to Haversham. I have not been able, because it's so close to the road. It is not able, I'm not able to like park my car and get around the same drainage.
This is, this is Haversham here. And this is the site that's going to be closest to Haversham. There is a ditch that runs along this way. But, you know, we decided to look along this edge, which is directly adjacent to this pond. And then on this side of Haversham, the water we lead is flowing in this direction away from the facility on that side. And you can kind of see, in terms of stormwater ditches, this is really the only one coming off of that facility in that direction. There are really stormwater ditches that run along this side of Haversham. There's one that's here along Haversham as well. We may put out another one up this way to see if anything is moving in that direction.
My concern is the one that's running right behind the.
This side? Yeah, sorry.
Which is, which is right behind the river wall and then goes across. I'll tell you toward the copper.
And so if we do the flow study with the college, what we're gonna determine is if the water is moving in this direction. And you can kind of simulate that. Anything that's here eventually is gonna make its way down there. But we wanted to see what the grade A was, starting here and not necessarily going down this way. But when our initial investigations, before we set up these sites, we did, you know, we were working around the ditches over here. Some of these are lined with, you know, textile fabric. And I mean, they're all really not that, they're difficult to get in and out of. But the easements over here, the county easements, first to the easements, the ease of access there was kind of why we stayed along this point. And then also, the farther you get away from the site, the more possibility you have for other factors that can contribute to what we're getting out of the water. So we really wanted to keep them as close to the facility as possible.
That is originally why I chose of sites not closer to the road. Because other than site four, when you are that close to the road, you are gonna have various hazards, internet, gravel, anything that's broken down from trucks in that water, which is also contamination. I would also like to point out, when you look at this map, the blue on the map is a former, like wetland pond. A reason I chose sites four through three, or one through three, were because they were along that path. So that could mean that there's a possibility of water. So that could mean that there's a possibility of water being flowing from that, um, that area from the, um, facility. That's why I chose those sites. Um, it, it is accessibility and it's easier for me to get down to the sites rather than going all the way around the road.
Uh, it was nineteen ninety-three, the pond was, uh, that property was previously owned by Kirkley's, I think. Yeah, it's a nineteen eighty-eight, it was sold to, uh, Jones, John Jones LLC. Um, and it was around the early nineties, that pond, that blue area that you see there, um, it was basically kind of filled in and then the retention pond moved to the other side. We are still looking into what, if any permits were required in that whole process because, um, you know, you can't necessarily just pick up what, who it is. And we would assume that there was, uh, some sort of permitting that allowed that to happen.
So it kind of sounds to me like it's already been done at the, but do you, are you, are the published standards that they have to adhere to or best practices based on business and EPA and EPD and all folks that have been laying in?
Yeah, so especially when it comes to the solid waste handling permit, which again is just one of the, um, aspects of the business. And that picture, to me, I completely agree with you, Mr. Martin, and it does, it looks like a round field, doesn't it? I mean, there's a lot of heavy, what I would consider as high industrial activity happening on that site. Um, the area down here, um, these are all the, the roll-offs. So these are big tracts that the gulls that they bring, you know, for people that are demolishing houses or, you know, maybe learn the scene of response after a hurricane, something like that. Um, so there's no telling that it could be in those. Uh, I'm not exactly sure what they're required to do in terms of washing them out. This is actually where the trash handling is. Then, uh, this area is the recycling, um, so again, that's kind of recycling services, um, where the city residents, they're recycling, picked up, goes here and it goes to Jacksonville. So there are transfer stations for all of those. This is the construction and demolition operation, so that's where they're collecting concrete. And they actually rent a large machine to grind that concrete. Um, Jekyll Island actually just did that whole thing, it was in the news today. Um, and I'm, I'm know for sure that there's a lot of dust that comes off of that and we've, uh, placed in the residences and that. Um, but, you know, it, it's, it's not a landfill, they're not required to have any sort of lining. Um, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there isn't stuff kind of seeping into the soil that, you know, going forward, five, ten years from now, or if the facility just alone will ever exist, where they would actually have to go in and clean out that sediment because it's toxic or it has metals or some sort of residual leftover, um.
In the, in the toilet, please. Thank you.
I have just one last thing, uh, a request for Sabrina. Uh, the, um, the bushes or the vegetation is getting a little crazy. So if we can, um, request that public works go out there and help take care of some of the vegetation along the stormwater ditches, help her out, that would be, that would be really appreciated.
If you don't, you won't send the ghosts, they won't be telling me the same.
I know, we would love to be able to, uh, come back after we finish the month in our data, maybe in early twenty twenty, we can do a final report. And we are meeting with, uh, my local college park, name of the planning assembly, uh, their scenario committee and the residents and providing updates to them as well. So thank you guys so much for, uh, just being here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, environmental, environmental committees. Okay, uh, move along on the item, uh, agenda, item discussion, item number four. Item two, consider approval, consider approval of August seventh, thousand nineteen, regular scheduled meeting minutes and August fourteen, two thousand nineteen, public period minutes.
Second.
It probably goes second for approval of August seventh, two thousand nineteen and August fourteen, two thousand nineteen, regular scheduled meeting and public period minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor of this raised right hand? At the same time, same like, solid affirmative, so that motion carries. Item five, consider approval of resolution number two thousand nineteen dash ten, stating two thousand twenty solid waste fee. Mr. General, our city manager is presenting.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're tonight in our solid waste fee. Uh, earlier we had a little hearing around the military, we talked about the budget and the law of our military. We had form, we had law. We also, each year during our tax, you know, we send out the tax bills who have added an assessment fee for solid waste for the twelve twenty year issue. So naturally, we bill our taxes in the rear, so we'll go backwards and then bill the twelve nineteen taxes. We're going to build services, solid waste sanitation services for our business. The, uh, city has been contracted with public services. We're currently at our third year. That contract held rate for the three-year period, it won't change for the first year. City, the life of the city purposely subsidized that increase because it was quite an increase from the fees that we had. So we used our reserve of two hundred two thousand that we had on hand, uh, to actually keep the fees lower than we have. So this is twenty twenty, that would be twenty eighteen. And then last year, we increased the rates where they needed to recover our costs, which was, uh, to twenty three, twenty one thirty to twenty two twenty. Now we're in the third year, we're actually looking at dealing at the same rate. And so, uh, it was our pleasure to try to align that rate. So not only are we holding the taxes, but a lot of taxes, we're holding the line on our sanitation for our customers this year. So we're looking at a monthly rate of twenty two twenty once again. So we can, uh, resolution two thousand ten, it shows the tax rates that we have for residential, commercial and, uh, recycling.
Commissioners, questions, comments? You state something that, uh, rate states thing?
Sir, it's going to bring in one million four hundred ninety-five thousand, roughly, to kind of help pay off the fees and pay the, the public turnover costs we have to ask. Commercial customers that we regularly have are a little over two hundred. Uh, the dumpster customers are actually not through our system, it's people who have carts or cans. The remaining customers, which are approximately, I don't know, a fair amount of six thousand. I don't have the exact number, I know it's higher, so it's a little higher than six thousand.
We've got two hundred commercial.
Yeah, it's a point one hundred and seventy-nine and two hundred, it's. Our larger commercial customers actually were contracted, we allow them to, uh, we've created franchises to those companies. So all the multiple companies, waste management, uh, any of the services down there, they can directly contract with the, those companies for dumpster service. We not see the dumpster service, uh, and in twenty twelve, private tax.
Questions, commissioners, comments?
Our, um, any question, our customers, um, commercials and properties that owe back taxes? Since the, these fees are part of that, that building?
They usually, there are few people who, if you're not paying your taxes, they probably not going to be, or try, so that's true. Yes, that's true.
I mean, is it, it's still on there or it's not, do they realize there's nobody doing it here that?
Not at all, no, it's still, they're still, they're considered viable property. Uh, there are homes that are dilapidated, this, the, the apartment is poorly lighted here and they're building those properties. And so if there's, it's not a viable residence anymore, then there's not a requirement of paying sanitation notes that are on the side of hand, if that makes sense. Is this something they can house your house that can burn and it's not, have your way or not, or not, or not pushing them to pay for the burn?
Well, that's right, one time, we had that problem too, a lot of trash can actually stuff up buildings and, 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 and.
We did, we did have that problem, they should have been contracted further. Um, they went out, they put some garbage cans in some, some houses. They didn't go everywhere, but they could tell that, I mean, actually some houses were not, some of these there. I mean, we went back and took a list and compared that.
Okay, commissioners, you see, uh, been presented by our city manager that, uh, solid waste fee will stay, residents will stay same to the twenty-two dollars and twenty cents or one, equal to twenty-two sixty-six, two sixty-six forty, and, uh, which is on our private tax.
I'll make note of it, approved reservation number twenty nineteen dash ten for solid waste for state.
Second, it probably goes second for, uh, consider, uh, approval of a resolution, say, now, twenty twenty solid waste fee. Any further discussion? Here in, all in favor of this raised right hand? All the same, seem as that motion carries, and that is, thank you. All right, thank you, General, thank you for standing here with the next, next item. Uh, consider approval of resolution number twenty nineteen dash seven, stating twenty twenty stormwater utility fee.
Yes, sir, this would be the, uh, stormwater fee that would be city adopted twenty eighteen, the stormwater utility. Uh, that actually was a two-year study prior to that, that justified the need for stormwater improvements for the city and our, uh, need for projects or maintenance. And the study included a fee, a fee study as well, we're trying to look at the proper fee would be to cover the capital improvements in the period of years. Uh, it was set to standard fee as a company implementation. The fee for year one, which program year, year one was twenty nineteen, was set for three ninety-five per month for residential unit. Uh, this year, year two, it's established that by that study, they increased to four fifty per month for residential unit for the twenty-twelve service year. And as you recall, each unit, uh, who, your residential unit, each house, for the size, there are commercial customers or residential customers or current customers, uh, will all have to pay. Quarter of residential unit based on the amount of previous services they have, so who, what pavement, who, what building they have on the property, that percentage is calculated to determine a certain equal number of residential units. And with that amount, we have to bring in the, next year is estimated to be under sixty-two thousand dollars.
I want to thank, uh, uh, for bringing, bringing that, um, stormwater utility fee. Uh, cause we have a number of governmental buildings, uh, in the city that, that, uh, take up a lot of our property. Uh, so we, we don't guard any, uh, monetary value, you can start us up and move forward for all the rest of us. And this would help us, and seems that everybody, uh, perhaps would like to run our stormwater utility. And also, we're putting in there, there's guidelines in there for, uh, waiters as well, for people who don't have that, uh, that issue. Um, so, I'm, I'm real pleased by that because we are able to establish a stormwater utility. Commissioners, you have any questions or comments? The question was, the general, uh, no, I am taking most of this.
Second.
Moving second for adoption of the resolution two thousand nineteen dash seven, twenty twenty stormwater utility fee. Any further discussion? All in favor of this raised right hand? All right, that motion carries, and that is, thank you. All right, item number seven, uh, consider approval of resolution number twenty nineteen dash twelve, say, not military. Ms. Kathy Mills, our finance director is presenting, as you presented, the, the public hearing.
Um, we talked about this at conference radio, this meeting, and I had a part of the public meetings, um, or this, or, um, I will bring in the resolution forward to pass the million rate for two thousand nineteen taxes at thirteen point two one nine, which is the same million rate we've had for about the last four years. And, um, property taxes, so it's possible that some tax barriers will see, uh, different increase from the prior years if we could be policy wise, the property tax on that. But, um, it's a very small, um, I don't know where it is, so, um, I'm here to ask you to, to the resolution so that if you go to the tax commission's office and they will detect it to the city or to, to, to go to the department revenue so that we'll be able to bill the taxes.
Commissioners, we've had our three, uh, require public hearing on this matter, uh, and we've had a few, uh, some discussion about the military and why it seems to be increasing with state insane. However, uh, do you have any comments?
I'm like the budget, and we are, the resolution twenty nineteen dash twelve, that is twenty nineteen, that's the, the, the.
Second.
Motion second for approval of resolution number twenty nineteen dash twelve, saying the million rate, um, uh, being the same as before last year. Any further discussion? Here in, uh, my, my, my.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
May I approach them?
Yes.
Your colleagues?
Yes, seem as if that motion carries, and that is the thing you showed us, all right. Move by long, item number eight, consider adoption of amendment thirteen to define amendment intention plan. Ms. Mills, you were here presenting again.
Yes, we have a commission committee, um, and they, the commission committee voted to exempt assets to the commission of amendment thirteen, which is being filed for forty to nine. Uh, it's rather complicated, I'll try to make it as simple as I can. Um, we have a anomaly, since we now require employees to pay that contributions, if we had an employee that previously worked for the city and they left and they would pay out under the eligible, so you can take a lump sum contribution. If they were, if they were normal retirement, but it was under sixty-five at that time, which we changed the term, but they said then. But at that time, they retired and took their own bill, um, as long as, um, when they come back to workforce again, then when they finally leave again, the way that is just computed is based on all of their years of service for the city. Because they left prior to turning sixty-five and old retirement, they, we can end up with a negative, uh, or theoretically that we have to pay money back. And so this amendment changes it so that those numbers will, will be the same. A problem arose because now we're having people contribute to the plan. And the way it was written before, they'd be contributing to the plan because it was required to, but they did not get that money back. So basically, it would contribute to something, but they don't got it, they don't have it. And so, so that was our intention, our intention was always that people would at least get back their payback contributions. So this amendment will take that, you know, um, it doesn't happen very often. And so, you know, this is the first best action we've seen this, but it can happen, um, when we rehearse it.
Well, thank you for explaining that, uh, as I'm listening to that. You know, there was a time when city paid, uh, our employees were paying to anything, city paid them out just by, first of all, they were working. You know, there was a time when city paid, uh, our employees are paying to anything, city paid them out just by, first of all, they work for us. So sometimes it spoils, um, those citizens or either, quite personal. But anyhow, uh, we are where we are, considering that, uh, and the change, amendment will change to make things align so employees will be paid out when they retire, uh, based on their payments to the commission plan. Commissioner, you have any questions? Comments?
It's taken fifteen more hours.
It will be back, back in January for two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
City, gentlemen, we go with this, you know? And I think up and down the road.
Guarantee this.
No guarantee, you don't guarantee.
The commission plan is turning into this thing, I should go through, go out and talk.
Okay.
It should be turning on the board.
Okay, all right. Any further questions, uh, been posted. Any further comments? If not, I will take motion, please.
We have a motion that we, uh, adopt amendment number thirteen to the city project, to define amendment intention plan.
Motion second to, uh, adopt amendment thirteen to define benefit intention plan as presented. Any further discussion? All of them, please raise your right hand. All at the same time, seem like we are affirmative, thank you, motion carries. All right, item number nine. Still approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash thirteen, Bay Street corridor improvement. Mr. Iverson, our other representative in the city here.
This item, as you said, is a consideration of a resolution for a transportation funding match. The BATS committee is the London area transportation study. And that's a local metropolitan planning organization for the city of London, technical and county. The, um, the Georgia Association Metropolitan Planning Organizations, or Gampo, as they call it, um, distributes funds to the local, distributes federal and state funds to the local municipal planning organization annually. But then, as some of these funds go on planes, there's a pool left over of, of the land funds. And the local organizations are allowed twice a year to go after these funds for planning projects. We are currently starting on a project for the Laker Cross intersection improvement that is funded by these additional funds. This is a, another project we're asking for funding out of those additional funds from Gampo. It's a study of the Bay Street corridor. And it encompasses more than just this section of Bay Street, um, right there by Perry Ross Park. We called the transportation freight considerations along that state route. We had to expand the scope of this study all the way out to High ninety-five, coming down New Castle Streets, Long Bay Streets, and then out Fourth Avenue to where it intersects seventeen, to encompass the full scope of that corridor coming through town. So the, um, the technical committee and the policy committee of the BATS organization have both recommended that this project be submitted to Gampo for funding. But as it goes to Gampo, what the requirements for Gampo to look at is that the local government commit to, um, funding the match. So that's what this resolution is, for us to commit to that funding match so that Gampo will consider this, um, project for funding. The project is estimated, I believe, at over twenty thousand dollars. We're required to put up a cash match of twenty percent, which is a total of twenty-four thousand dollars that will come out of our budget. We do have some money set aside in the, um, general fund for contingencies like this. It could be paid out of contingency funds, but most likely, this project would not kick off until we're into our next budget here. So we will budget for, specifically for that project going into that year. As I said, this is a study to study the, uh, four more of the, of High ninety-five, or Bay Street, ninety-five to Highway seventeen. Maybe more user friendly, more pedestrian friendly, and improve connectivity between Perry Ross Park and downtown areas.
I've had the opportunity to serve on the, on the BATS policy committee, which I've been enjoying, um, and does as well. I often attend technical policy as well, staying on that. But, you know, these are two study areas, the Laker Cross intersection and the Bay Street, we've been working on that for a while. But, um, it's good to see these projects now really being pushed forward at a higher level. G-Dod and folks at the level that we can really get some things on, and I think, um, the consultants that we've put by the city in the county have been tremendous in helping us know about some of these funding at the federal and state levels.
Our plan will, it may, it wasn't really for the water, for the air, the concrete, for the health of our families.
And I, I, I don't know, that's financial, that's, you can, or, that's, anyway, you know what's funny is this, this. Yes, that was, that was bad, and the money flooded straight back to, to Perry Ross Park. It's just a coordination and organization committed to bring, bring everybody together.
I'll go there.
The way, the way this works.
You might explain about the community advisory committee as well.
Right, the way this contract works was, the contract would be between Glen County and Gampo, or the federal funds on Glen County. And then the city would more or less be a subcontractor to that. We would then be managing the project. County would just be there to sort of contract oversight. So all the funds would be distributed to us through Glen County. Our, our match would then go back through Glen County.
That's good, we count it, we go to the federal.
Right. She mentioned the, um, oversight of the advisory committee with the Laker Cross intersection. We're just getting that project taken off, we're setting up a stakeholders committee to include people who use that area frequently, um, neighborhood planning association right now there, the Howard Park staff, the school staffs right there, public service, fire police department, get their input as the project kind of is taken off. And I would, I would imagine something similar like that will take place with this Bay Street corridor to get community inputs as, as we get into projects.
Yeah, I've got a question on page two. Paragraph, the first paragraph is carried over from page one to the seventh. Paragraph says, city's running staffs to meet the Bay Street corridor improvements day. The BATS technical committee can consider without the Bay Street and the street. Where, what has our staff submitted to me as Bay Street corridor improvements?
The way the BATS committee is, or BATS organization is set up is you have two committees functioning under that. You have your technical committee and your policy committee. The way it works is that, the, the staff, we say, hey, we would like to study this area. And we've got this area where we made it a problem, a traffic issue, a pedestrian issue. We would like to study that and how to commit proof. That is what basically the conversation we took to the technical committee. The technical committees then discussed, said, yes, we agree that's a problem area. They recommended to the policy committee. Policy committee then recommends that the application there go to Gampo. So basically, there's, there is an application, uh, you know, it's one-page application. We give a summary of the area, the problems that we see there, and the suggested improvements, or what we're looking to get out of study. Which is improved pedestrian safety, improved connectivity, um, in that area while, you know, still maintaining the level of service there for the truck traffic. The level of service in the, the freight corridor is a big part of this, this Bay Street project. So they're, they're going to be looking at that side of it closely to try not to significantly reduce that level of service for the freight service toward the port supporter right there.
But the, but there is a number then of, uh, commitment by the city staff of what would want the improvements to be. Where, where is that at? Where is what being submitted to BATS?
I can get that in, I can.
Is that really your idea? I get worried about that.
Because it wasn't, it wasn't just a conversation, not from, from what, so what you're saying to what's on here on paper. It's not, it wasn't just a conversation, it was something that was documented, essentially.
Right, and it starts with a conversation, you know, what area y'all have we like to study? And we listed those areas, um, the three that were originally listed are discussed in the first meeting a year and a half ago were Laker Cross, Bay Street, and, um, Michael Routs on MLK from Lobster to on Rattler.
Right, right, I think, but I think.
And after that, we decided, okay, which one of the beaches do we want to go forward with? And then we say, we want to go forward with Bay Street, then we fill out that application and write up that summary. So I can get that to you.
Okay, yeah, I think what you're saying is, because you're saying that we doc, we documented something. But it sounds like what you're saying there is in the midst of the conversation and the meetings, um, that the city just kind of told the committee that areas are concerned and the committee documented? Or did the city sit down with their staff aside from the committee and documented something and said, okay, here we go, this, these are our concerns? But it wasn't just in the translation of the conversation in the midst of a committee meeting? It was actual staff documenting something and then taking it to the committee and saying, this, these are our concerns?
Once we decide that in the committee, okay, this is a legitimate project, Bay Street is a legitimate project to go forward and ask for funding, then I've worked with the consultant from Reynoldsville Hill, who oversees the BATS committee. I worked with her to fill out that application.
Okay, so you asked, it wasn't, it wasn't an individual just sitting there. It was something done in the midst of a meeting of the BATS committee?
That's right.
That this information was documented, and then that committee meeting? And then it was, uh, transferred to the actual document? And now it's coming back the same? Okay, we want to now submit the application based on what we as a, like, told committee saw, see as a meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Right, it, it was then discussed and approved in the technical committee and policy.
Okay, okay, so they did.
Is that?
He just wants to get out of the, out of the.
Well, I'm pretty sure the end is, and I thank everybody here, not just the BATS committee, you see, what the staff said. Which had changed in, I think, I remember Bay Street was too many out there. And we're, we're, we need to have total influence here. To, to have people involved with the process, and I appreciate what y'all, I appreciate people who do the many. But still, you need here.
Well, criticism, I think, uh, to me, no, well, I was, I was. Well, I'm not trying to give you explanation as.
It's the way that somebody is out there, staff doing some things.
Well, I understand, it is, you and that.
That's no problem.
Well, I don't know, we don't have a copy of what was submitted, but we have talked about this, uh, city manager and also cities here. We've talked about it many years. And, and we have put down our, our priorities, and this is one of our priorities. Uh, now, I'm sure, I was gonna give you a copy of what was submitted.
I think this condition you could have, compared to what I can, and I should, I don't think you could have to have.
Mr. Mary, would you like to have a copy of that from commissioners? But I would like to add, if I could, that if you're always correct, it's with something that was talked about in twenty fifteen. The, uh, Commissioner Martin was championing, at that time, championing what we can do in Bay Street. Instead of the beautification project, I think we had some DMT objections due to the truck driver. So I think we recognized it as a problem in twenty fifteen, and that staff is not, from all we carried all the way through. And so it's changing into more things, we're working through the advisory committee, it's an original plan that we had on the table back then. So we're changing, oh, funding for the study, we're likely to do a study.
Well, let's just, let's just give it, give a copy to the board and we'll accept that. I'll tell you one.
Just to take it a step further, too, um, this would be just for a study. And then you have to apply, once the study is done, then you've got to go to the next out and submit the project for, to, for funding at federal and state level, so.
Right, this is planning, oh, like this.
But not even if what I submitted, if I, I mean, if it's not that way, you can just say, hey, we have, how will we go out there and do it?
But it's a concept. It's a really concept.
It's a good idea, it's a concept, but I don't care what you, if you submit something, I guess, over, over, that's, that's all. And it shouldn't be any other way about any, but not just, I said, it should be. We, we can, I remember when Bay Street was too many out there, there were four that we had out there. And in my opinion, it's very, we need to have total support up here, with whatever changes we make out there. Not just the folks who sit on that, okay? That's, that's the way, and I would like, I would, I would like to have a meeting, I would like this board to say, yes, I need this one. This is it. It's just, this.
Well, they will, they will.
Let's, let's spend twenty-four thousand, I, I mean, I have to spend twenty-four thousand dollars for a study, I don't know what y'all want.
We'll get you a copy of that. Well, I'm pretty sure that a lot of us know what it, what it is, and we will, uh, get that to you, uh, Commissioner.
Get, get in here, man.
Well, yeah. So, what you want to do with this, this item?
Mr. Mary, I have a motion that we approve the, uh, Bay Street corridor improvement. It will, just a policy planning, funding match as presented.
Motion second for the approval of the, uh, resolution number twenty nineteen, uh, that thirteen Bay Street corridor. Any further discussion?
Yeah, if it's built with money, it's a major, and it can, and it can.
This has not been discussed.
You got a number of budgets, and you can make a proposal, you have to speak to.
Well, I would also, I would like to, uh, ask this question to you, is that I see, um, something in it says we will use splash funding for this, and you didn't mention that.
Right, and that's after, after I submitted this, Mr. Drum and I talked again about it, and that's when, uh, we discussed that contingency fund that we have this year's budget. Then most likely, we will be able to specifically budget an item in the general fund before the project kicks off in next year's budget. So, um, it's my mistake when we splat that on there, we would need to, this would need to come out of the splash fund. Certainly, have a contingency money if we need it, I'd have to come out of it.
Well, and I want to say this, as a member of the next committee, that, that's why I continue to say, let us see this stuff. So when we get to this point, we don't have to go through all this. Because not only can I attest to it, which I can at this point, because I've not seen it, this is my first time seeing, uh, Commissioner Williams, Mayor Protemis, I've seen it. So when we, when this stuff comes through us and we're able to see it, and we're able to discuss it with you, then now we can move forward, and we don't have to spend time and go back and forth with this, okay? Because I would have to say, I know my counterparts and my neighbors will ask me, okay? Which he shouldn't ask me those things, I'm going to find it to me. He should ask me those things, and I should be able to answer those questions for him if I had an opportunity to review these, these documents. if I had an opportunity to review these documents. I hadn't had it, so when he think of an actual question.
We get, we get formal, I have to get, so there's an excuse for that.
No.
No, it really isn't, I'm being serious.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be formal, it should be more formal. We don't get that.
Okay, then my motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor of passing the resolution, please raise your hand.
I'm raising my hand tonight, because I look at it, and I think that it is good, but you need to get that information to all of us.
All opposed, in the morning. Okay, as a, as a reply, the motion carried forward.
Just to make sure that this information, application, or whatever, is for Bay Street, and then also for the New York, Boston, for that one.
Make sure the motion is carried forward. Uh, you standing here? Hi, I'm number ten, consider approval of agreement with CXT for purchase, delivery, installation of restroom at Liberty Ship Park. And also, or considering number nine, number eleven, considering that area, consider approval of installation, purchase, delivery, installation of restroom at Overlook Park. Sir, please, that was something, that was.
We have, we have talked for some time now about restroom at, at both ways location, Liberty Ship and Overlook Park. After a bit of research and investigation in this, determined that our best alternative is a precast restroom facility that is brought in and placed on site. And that's what the, that's the package I have before here tonight. We're looking at, for Overlook Park, a four-stall or four-seat restroom, two men, two women's. And same as well at Sydney and that park, two men, two women's. Both would be served by city water, municipal water, connected to the sanitary store system, and electric utilities. The package, as it, its price here includes construction, delivery, and installation of restroom and facility, and connection to the utilities. Our part of that would be to get the utilities to that site, and prepare the building, and have it ready for them to bring it to set in place. In, in researching this, we put out an RFP for restrooms about a year ago. We got one response, and at Overlook Park, that cost was hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. And same for Liberty Ship, that, that particular company suggested the same building at Overlook and Liberty Ship Park. For since done more research, found, found this vendor, CXT, this pricing they've given us is their government pricing, which already been, been out, it's source bill pricing they're coming in now. The product at Overlook Park comes at a cost of ninety thousand, five-hundred forty-two dollars. And Liberty Ship Park would come at a cost of one-hundred thirty-eight thousand, one-hundred fifty dollars. So both of those are significantly less than the hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars that we got for the RFP process. The restrooms that, or this package that we have here is, like I said, precast concrete, concrete floors, concrete walls, concrete roof with a metal roof covering. There's several textures available, and colors available for exterior textures. Stainless steel facilities inside, minimized maintenance. And hopefully, it should, it should be a, where you just come in and hold it down as necessary. Try to minimize the maintenance of the best possible for this thing.
First, why, why would, why is it in the issue of the person's ownership?
It's a different style building, the, the building at Sydney and there is a little, a little bit larger building. A little more spacious building. We had to, had to deal with a smaller building at Overlook because of our budget. Building was, I think, a hundred thousand dollars for improvements at Overlook. So we need to, to, I'm just to stay within that budget. We do have a little more money budget in Sydney and there, five-hundred nineteen thousand dollars, so we're able to use a little bit larger building. That'd be something a little bigger, a little ruder.
These are probably the SPOSS. Yeah, I think.
Go forward. I have the same amount of control. Why would they, why would you go deal with one part?
Here, I've got some, some drawings, old man drawings, who are scared, may help a little bit. And I have. Hey, sir.
I see it, I see it.
Which, which, which?
This is, this is Overlook, this is, over the end, goes at Overlook. And I hope my A.D. right, sir. A.D. compliant, good, compliant, compliant. They are, as I said, they are human compliant, they'll have flood bidding and everything that's required there. But I also feel like, you know, both of these areas are subjected to potential storm surge, so if a building was to get damaged or moved, shifted somehow, should withstand and just set it, set it back in place. So we, we do feel that it's sort of a benefit from a, a stigma of building, if it's a.
I think it's nothing that would not look, uh, comfortable to me at all for this, this facade.
And this facade is not indicative of the facade that we would select. And I mentioned, there's several facades available that is board and backside, and there's a lap, horizontal lap side, and they're structured, they're split-faced block. I was having a conversation with Mr. Trump, I think we would lean towards a split-faced, split-faced block because of the needs of maintenance, and that kind of thing.
Which is definitely similar to like the emergency, emergency cleaning cabinet outside of the T, back down the block.
It's the concrete block where the exterior is a texture of rough texture.
Okay, okay.
They can start by, but they make it so you don't need it.
You don't have to.
Don't have to hang it, don't have to.
And that's what you've got, is that emergency cleaning, you do a concrete roof, and then a concrete, and stuff. And I'm sure there's your end of the, and I would, if it's, you kind of, you want to look at it, it might.
Right, and that's, that's the same, that's our reason before that, that texture, that it is to reduce maintenance inside and out. Metal roof or a concrete roof slab should be no maintenance there. So we, we just try to minimize that as much as we can.
So is, where will this be on site? I'm sending closer to the parking lot, so we can.
When we talk about it, before we talk about, at Overlook, there's, in the middle of the parking lot, there's sort of a semicircle happening in the center of that park. Probably sitting down right there. At the near park, there's a grass strip, if you come up with boat ramp, like, straight up the boat ramp, there's a grass strip up there, probably right in that area, right there, near the top of the boat ramp, just above the parking area.
I saw the insulation on these things.
They, these, the vendor has a one-hundred twenty-day term, so we were to approve this and getting the go-ahead, we're looking around the end of the year to do it.
So, so, so how's that?
That would give us time to, a couple months to get in there. Make sure the building plans, get our utility connections coming. And Overlook, we got to get, do not permit to get the utility in, or Highway seventeen, we got that in progress. As soon as we get that, we would, we would get those utilities in, make those connections, and get the utilities stood up at the site, be great for when they deliver.
So approximately. Right. Approximately starting?
We would probably go ahead and get started on, on our end, you know, me, just so that we're not budgeting. We certainly would get the utility board under, and most likely connect and trench those on in. We can cap it off, and they can sit there, wait until the builders are there.
Karen, how much is, is the foundation, but the work that we got to do, other than what you're adding, a pretty design, how much is that?
At Overlook, we're looking at about eight to ten thousand dollars to get those utilities stood up. Along that is the directional hole of the utilities under Highway seventeen. So.
You're going to go to main door, or?
Yeah, looking at the door, we would make the connection over here to the parking lot of that, that building, to seventeen, and that's where the sanitary store manhole is. Come under right there, and trinch them on up to the site. We're looking at, at eight to ten thousand dollars at Overlook, which puts right at our SPOSS budget, that dollars, at. Sydney and there would be quite as much, because we don't have the directional hole, we just have to make the tying to the force main and the water system down there. So you're probably looking at, at a few thousand dollars less, or five thousand dollars there to make those utility connections.
So what you're looking at, is two hundred and forty-two thousand? Let's just say by time we're doing, you're going to have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the restroom. I could build you a bathroom house with that. I'd give you a employee right there, but I was a good builder. Build houses, it was built here after forty years, and they've been used today, and so. I, that's just, that's just a lot of money, I mean, it's just. We can't lay a pad and have some blocks, put under that pad and ice and boards, and, I mean. That's weird.
I don't want to look at that.
No. So you got one out of Southern Park out there, do you think that?
I'd say.
That's, we got a nice facility, I mean, and it doesn't look to me like it would fall in near Fremant fact. I don't mind you calling, I bet they never come in there, but I've written my, I don't.
I don't know if you care.
Most of the panel areas, so it's, it's hard. The service panel, I mean, the utility room, or whatever it is.
There, each building has a sort of utility chase, which allows for, for some storage, but access to the internal utility water line, water heater, that kind of thing, rain lines. So, I mean, it's typically in the center of those buildings.
There's no heating? Are we heating the water, let's say?
No, man, we, we are not planning that, what they, they have to say, if they were located, that's where they will be. But it, it's just maintenance storage and access to any utilities in there.
Basically, I think, we need bathrooms, and we've been talking about this for six years, huh? Maybe a war. Maybe tell, tell me about bathrooms. And tell them about, and they tried to not be graphic, to not, to let us know the need for bathroom, not there. Especially over. Just take us some time, take us some time to get here, where, where we are. I don't know about bathrooms so far, but I can't speak to that either, Karen.
This is, uh, SPOSS phone, or?
Yes, sir, yeah, sorry, whatever, probably just SPOSS. I didn't hear it mentioned in the county, I do know that they have one of these facilities on the way, that they're using at Paul Park, that will be installing one of these in the new park, overall, on the market street. I'm not sure which model they're using.
If you're thinking, I agree, it says, it is, it is a good facility. But it does seem like it's, it's very costly to be. Play that in the street, so I, I pray that you're kidding. I, I, you know, if we, if we need facilities, and, 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 we all need, you know, we need.
Okay, any further questions, please, I'm asking. If not, I consider these two items for, for, I consider a motion to these.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we approve the restroom facilities for Liberty Ship Park and Overlook Park, presented by the city.
So probably motion second for approval of these two items, Liberty Ship, Park, and Overlook Park for purchase, delivery, installation of restroom, and your brother's. If you're in the, automatically raised right hand. All opposed? Okay, then reply reflect that it's four to one. For approval of this, these two, for bathrooms. All right, thank you. Moving along with our appointments, I have a twelve board appointment. We have one board appointment for the tree board. And it seems that the incumbent, Mr. Bonietta, Bryce and Kits, her term expires eight sixteen, two thousand nine, nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two. And she is petitioning to be reappointed.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to reappoint Bryce and Kits, right here.
Motion second for reappointment, Mr. Bonietta Kits, to the tree board, in front of the session. All favorably raised right hand? All opposed same time? I feel like that motion carries the damage, so thank you. Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to hold your, hold yours, no mine, let's skip to indications. I'm, those missed their part, everyone's know how to sit here before. This case, we've discussed regarding the former, we were committed to monitor discussion, provide information on environmental concern facing the city, and, and.
Well, I, I think I see a, of a committee in, looking at, though, about area three, what's, what's happened out there.
Well, I, uh, I think I see a, uh, a committee in, uh, looking at Doug about Terry Creek, what's, what's happened out there. The longevity of time and the continuity that's put into the, uh, political, uh, Terry Creek. And I consider also ally chemical and some of the other organs. I live on Riverside Drive and something that we don't ever talk about out there is we had a creek floating plant out on Riverside Drive. I walked out there as a kid and remember the, the, uh, infrastructure that's pouring. I don't even remember being active, uh, uh, plan out there, but, but I can imagine what's under where we live out there. Because it has never been an important avenue out there. Had we had some committee in place to take care of our concerns and, uh, to help the community to monitor and discuss and flag recommendations on environmental concern facing our citizens, we perhaps would be a long way ahead of where we are today. We might even have a resolution in our column and we have more input. And, and the citizens then go to the board and, uh, then, then what we have given out of the nation. So I do ask you to consider, uh, tonight, the, uh, formation of committee to, uh, be an active committee. We just, uh, have made appointment to a three board and I would see this as, as being, uh, a committee with, with absolute continuity and, and purpose for the, uh, uh, city to stay out in front of a situation like where you're here today. I would ask you please to consider that.
Thank you, sir. Yes. Also, Mr. Park, he, uh, did not get a chance to speak or comment, and you said you'd like to speak. I don't know, your case was spoken, is that true?
I think so. I did hear a whole lot of what you said, I think so.
Please. Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. My phone might be going, I'm going to close for a time, I had straight from work. Uh, for you, Mr. Barrett, I can advance the weather in city tonight. Before I get started, I'd like to thank you, Commissioners, Police Chief Jones, or City Manager, Mr. Drummond, uh, for the support of Riverside Drive, uh, Convention Committee. We got our first signs on the bridge, I don't know if y'all have noticed or not, but that's, that happened, and I appreciate that. Uh, I hope it's the first of, of many things that we ask for to, to come. Again, thank you. I also like to thank Pam and Terry, this is the rest of the group. They were awesome supporting and we hope good things come out of this. Uh, I like the address concerning the recent decision not cleaning up Terry Creek's oil site. I know it's up in the air. Is my understanding that several rural inhabitants that will be covered up instead? I'm not hearing bad stories, they provided a lot of good job, uh, when they were a little lot. They had state and federal permits to discharge some of this, that was some fifty years ago, and a lot has changed, we now know better. The reason I'm here, and I express my concern for the residents of the homesites along Terry Creek, St. George Towers, Oak Park Community, and the Riverside Community, which I live, and the rest of our community. Have you ever thought how many times I'll go by this and how many seventeen and we, I mean, it's phenomenal. It's everybody in this community, it goes by that side during the meeting. Since moving out Riverside in two thousand, I have watched P D states in March in Norfolk, first start at its whole site and then close to Riverside. Now in two thousand nineteen, those states are less than a football field from my front door. When I've inquired about them, nobody does anything, but yet they're still there and moving. There's pretty newness, just in the last month or so. Please ride out Riverside safe for yourself, just do not do it on full moon, as our road goes underwater or matter, I would not like to talk to the commission at late at day about it. My question to you is, as a government, do you know the states represented? Do you know to replacing states? Are they testing soil for what? Are they tracking a chemical, a chemical plume? Uh, is my will, is, uh, my neighbors' irrigation water safe? I'm asking this commission for recovery, this mess up, and they found out, well, that's recovery. Uh, I think it's a big concern for our community. We, we've had four super fun sites in this community. L C P, uh, the double oh nine spur, um, S K M Incorporated, and this particular site right now. And the L C P and S K M, we saw those companies constantly get sold, get sold, get sold. Find the companies for, for, I'm not saying that's what Hercules is going to do, but we need to get this thing, my, their, their vibe, I mean, I'm not against Hercules. The large cell, my father, every day, his hardware stores to Hercules, found it right there. We dread very aggressive, it took food in my family's table, and a bunch of my friends, my best friends works for Hercules. But we, we really need to get in to find out what we're dealing with. Toxine, I've read a lot about it. I've said, I've had a report, it's done two thousand four from, and I've got a whole file up here on it. Toxin is an amazing substance. When I talked to a plant manager, a friend of mine who's passed away now, Bruce Allen, and I asked him about toxine, and he said, you know, we really, we know how to make it, it's just never comes out the same, those patents. Uh, it was, if you read about toxine, it just morphs. Every time we make it, it goes to tree bark, that's my assumption, tree bark, the cancer that they use is all different. They really never do it in hand, I think that's part of the problem, testing for toxine, it constantly moves, different generations, if you read about it, it's amazing chemical. I don't know if it's dangerous, I, as a kid, I, I lived in Riverside, it was summer camp for me. I swam out of the marsh, I crawled through the park, I did everything out there, and yet I'm still here, thank God. Is it harmful? I don't know. But before we, before we just let our government, our government's responsible, federal government, they just purpose to let them do this. They didn't know, nobody knew that, but we do know now, we need to do something about this. My hope that y'all can help me find out what the states represented, ride out Riverside and look, you'll see them. They're out there, and, I mean, why would you like to walk out in the marsh and put states out there unless they're, they're tracking something? I don't know, but nobody knows anything. Help us. Mr. Commissioner Casey, our neighbors, we talk, we see, don't worry. They're out there, there, somebody's doing something, you don't know what it is. Please help us. Thank you, I say, those people there, some of them are not the best to help to get in. They're out on New Creek Creek, it runs right to their backyard. Uh, they're closer to them than we are. Please help us out, I appreciate your time. I think some sort of assistance, advisor committee or somewhere input, I, I don't know if we're doing good. I'm encouraged by the bridge, something that really was kind of, I didn't think we were going to be able to get out of that, and we did. I appreciate y'all's help. Sometimes it works. Thank you very much. Any questions? Or say this question, please.
I've seen the same white, uh, space that you're talking about, um, on the causeway, on, on the south side.
Those, those are brand new, they look like little survey, so... Yeah, I think that's a big arm project, I've seen those too, um, if they do, these are P D C, we can't figure out how to get out of it. I mean, I was a kid, I crawled from marshes, nasty, it's been, I see, made trails, they are trails. I'm just talking to Commissioner Penn, I think they're done with the ruins now. I don't know how to do it. But you can ride out there, you can, you can look and see the colors though, because they all ones are dark color. And the new, just feel safe, free new, very, very bright, shiny, white, rusted football field away. I, I, I don't know, but thank you, man, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your benefit.
I would like to, actually, a manager to come out and walk over, but, uh, we can go with...
Yes? I said, say, y'all want to answer more questions? Some, some of them, yeah, I agree, okay. Well, thank you, I was gonna say, um, so, uh, I, now I haven't seen which specific type of state you're talking about, so I want to see them before I hundred percent can give you an answer, but, uh, my ninety-nine percent, um, likely answer is, is from soil sampling from the EPA and or whatever contracting company they have out there. Um, so they have to do feasibility studies and all sorts of sampling to understand exactly where the contamination is. And, um, they are conducting some of those for the second offerable unit of Terry Creek, which is going to be the wood storage and dredge oil areas. Um, so ninety-nine percent sure that those states are going to be for soil sampling for that area. I hundred percent know that it is not for groundwater sampling. The groundwater sampling that they're doing is concentrated around the Pinoza plant, and they're monitoring a plume of benzene that is traveling underneath Pinoza seventeen towards the Terry Creek Mobile Home Park. Uh, in two thousand twelve, that plume was only about a hundred feet away from the water wells uh, that are coming up underneath the Mobile Home Park there. Um, as it stands, groundwater around Riverside Drive has not shown to have any contamination. And I'm not sure if there were other questions that maybe I missed.
Well, 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 Matt, so that's a good answer, uh, frankly, um, what wells do they test on Riverside?
On Riverside?
Yeah.
So they have groundwater monitoring underneath and around the, um, Pinoza property, but, but Hercules has not tested the wells from the hulls, and neither has the EPA. So, so to note, they're not testing the wells and the water that's actually pouring up, and that's something that our organization has long advocated for, um, for them to actually go and take water samples from the houses. Um, and we have also, in the city, I actually believe, and the Joint Water Safety Commission has asked Hercules to extend water lines across the bridge to that community so that they have water hookups because they don't, um, to no avail.
You, you go to Terry Creek?
Uh, the, the Terry Creek Mobile Home Park.
So, well, that's a dream.
Yes, they do not have, they do not have drinking water from the Joint Water Safety Commission, they are not.
They don't have, they don't have water, they have well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I got one question. If, if they're monitoring, uh, EPA's Hercules, anyway, shouldn't they let the community know exactly where they're monitoring? And what they're monitoring for?
Uh, yeah, they absolutely can, so, um...
Do you know?
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know the specific locations, they're actually adding some. Um, it's, it's all within the reports that our organization received and our technical advisor reviews. Um, so, you know, do I know exactly where the groundwater monitoring locations are off the top of my head? No.
I don't know, but you do have that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We get that, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, maybe I think it's free to do a nice little G I S map of the location. And also, I'm very interested in your fire control committee for the rest of your...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to give y'all permission to come touch my...
You guys, you talk about that.
I've got a nice little well, it's a nice big well, it's in Roslyn, it's stored, it's not making drills, big well, it's one of the hundred and fifty.
Okay, hang on. You guys. Okay, um, Commissioner Casey, um, to, to your eyeing about, uh, uh, formation of committees, about new committee, uh, that's something that, uh, you know, we would take a look at real strongly and also, uh, we think they're right, uh, I say the manager to, uh, to, to, to continue to look at that and maybe bring it back forward so we can set, set it up, put out, send it to you, well, and then, um, we can, uh, set that, so that it goes to any committee or...
You know, if I can make additions, I, I really would like to move your own chief, that consensus that we would like to take a look at. I would like to have our attorney and our city manager to go to bring to us as soon as possible, what they think this committee would look like, formation, makeup, who you'd be on, what the venue would be to be on, uh, such committee. Long, and it is just start writing that agreement so we can get this thing in place, it is important that, uh, that, that we knew this thing was, it has some representation here.
I agree, and I think that's what I'm getting at, same.
It's been too long to, you know, trust in groups of people here, and that's basically, you know, it's fine, but it's...
Well, I think this committee will help, this commission may decide when the rest of the should, should, uh, go. Anyhow, you're lying. You just gave me that. That's inconsistent. Charter around the period. Yes. You just gave me that. All right. I have number thirteen. Considerable discussion and name of the city, but the total order is to add regulations for truck parking in our city.
Mr. Attorney. Good evening, Mayor Bishop. Uh, as you recall, this is according, um, to the last commission. We only change that for the discussion that we felt that would be required to interpret H three. It should be regulated in your copy. Uh, we address the confusion regarding local constituent tribes or local constituent tribes, whether they might be, whether some... It will be deliberate and have to quickly realize that the exact way to do that would be classified based on weight and how many tires are in it. Uh, we simply want to mirror the definition, uh, that I did previously included in our code section as to what types of vehicles can operate on our region. A good reason, anyway, so if you look at any motor vehicle or combination of motor vehicle and trailer, which either weighs more than six thousand pounds or has one of six wheels, or has a high grade IV motor, the road services are rated six milli hours, obviously, you must be duly, that would be okay for you. It must be driven with tang from a military type vehicle to their house, I'll just figure something else out. That should correct or hopefully avoid any of the conflicts that we're in here, I think, is the first I would discuss. That's the only change that was made. Uh, Brandon and I, whoever ever discussed it, thought it was appropriate change. So at this point, uh, you, you use a strap power, it still needs some more, so we did not write it today. But at this point, I think this will be, so long for commission, uh, seems to be ready to advertise and that's final.
You know, I've got a little question. I first thought it was nothing that, uh, trailer could do. I was told that there was a space law that, um, trailers were allowed to walk, where they're parking now. Are, are we considering that?
I'm not sure, I'm not, that's...
It happened no more times than you, and that's where I already got, got involved with it. It's just you're trying to get the location, and they would park that trailer, clean it up, kind of like, the house guy cleaned up and the street, and he like, sold it.
Like you said, it always has to be...
That's where trailer law is, right there, walking, that, that, out there.
If the trailer was licensed, I believe the police chief determined it was a licensed vehicle, and in this case, we can be more strict with it. It became a trailer, not a system.
I mean, it might be a risk of the use of the state law, but we gotta be able to regulate where they seem to be parking to be appropriate. So I think we are leaving more strict with the state law, unless it, the, 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 have to take a look back, make sure that the state law has not thrown hidden that it is a restricted parking right. I mean, it might be more restricted use in the state law, that the locality, that the ability to regulate where they see common parking to be appropriate, so I think we are leaving more strict in the state law, unless it, it might be happy to take a look back, and make sure that the state law does not prohibit it, that it is not restricted parking, but I don't know.
I remember the terminology that came back, and we, the first call we made, was that I would keep the police, and I would do this thing, and I would say, oh, and, uh, that, that way, we're far, we can, we can do more than that, and you guys, that's just the law. If you park those kind of things, and you come in, and it's banned, you don't know what's, I don't know, like, it could, it, it, and, um, Genshin was asked, was sitting there in that trailer. We would have to deal with it, so we needed, and order to take care of it, but again, we need to be sure that we're, to, to be, I think, sure.
I would, I would, felt check, nothing, there was nothing revealed in our research, and looking around, and I thought something did, about this panel, this type of situation, that would reveal that there's anything prohibiting us to regulate where trailer park. We already have a trailer, some of the less restricted trailer park situation, um, on, on, so you're right to, this one is very specific, and I would feel comfortable that the city can be more restrictive and outright禁止 parking.
Mr. Attorney, you, and I had this come up this week, and you were looking for this one, and it's kind of dealing with parking, so, you know, I had a brother call me, and said they were, called, and said, they had someone to be able to, you know, and, you know, what, what, this, this, we gotta get this, to help with that, there's, there's, I think, I've got, help them understand.
But it's a number of cars, but it is...
In office, I mean, they're, they're both taking charge, and they've taken into consideration.
Well, they just said, I have five cars, one car, I've got a tag, and everything on my insurance, but they said I can't handle my five cars, so I was...
I'll take a look at it, presenting a unique situation. You know, I say, because we need, you can't add in two or two, now I'm working, so there's a limit on the number of cars, and a limit of that, and I'll, you know, so just make sure.
Well, you just got to try some of this there, to make sure.
Okay, uh, are we, uh, all right with, uh, advertising this, uh, this order? I thank you, City Attorney, for being patient, and I let we work through that order, and, uh, when we come back, we'll deal with, tie it up here.
That's, that's good. I think before that, we'd be back more whichever, whichever, to the, uh, current city, so, I guess that was, for the...
I mean, the one thing about the tires is we got a new business, and also pretty, yeah, I'm sure, they sell the tires, I think, thanks for the, for, for, you know, they, they sell their tires. And they tour around the side, too.
We got, we can say, going across the street, uh, uh, this, a little street, uh, a little, I told you, yeah, we, yeah.
Okay, uh, Commissioner, you seem to have come to the end of our very competitive agenda, uh, and, uh, and, uh, I know there is a need for a second session, um, so, while there, Mr.?
I, I do have a need to schedule a second session.
The same personnel, anything else? Litigation? All right, most of the, the second session will be listed, and personnel. Most second for, uh, to retire, for the second session, for the state personnel, all of you, please say aye, or same time, aye, that's it, then we shall, shall move to the second session, and, uh, for, uh, especially.